So the recording is in progress and the transcription is on for those who need it.
So it is 5:45 PM. Good evening to everyone. My name is Nina Solomillo on behalf of Neighborhood Advisory Board 12 and our community action program that is operated by the New York City Council. We have a visitor. All right, so for those that are tuning in, we just had a visitor, a little bit about what he knows and part of the week. All right, so bringing it back, the people who are here tonight is so that we can discuss what are the priorities in terms of how to funding the investment in this community? And so it is so important that you're here tonight because you're literally going to be able to share your thoughts. It will be heard. It will be taken into consideration, be able to affect how money is spent in this community. Okay, and so we're going to go over it, but I just want to give you some context of how it works, right? Two questions. Have any of you heard of, you can, you can pause the survey. We're going to take about five minutes for the end to do it. But has anyone heard of, for example, participatory work in the community? This is not it. This is not it, right? So this, this is not, this is not involved, and I'm sharing this because two people have asked already. So this is separate from any of the funding that elected officials do. This is something that is handled through the Department of Youth and Community Development. Okay, so the way that it works, the way that this process works is, you see these surveys that you have on your hands? They are so important because based on what the priorities are, but most people say, for example, we need more access to programs in this community, or we need more job placement services in this community, and we need more support for elderly, elderly in this community. Let's say that those are the top three priorities that the majority of the people who's commuting to the town. Then with the Department of Youth and Community Development, they're going to put out something called RFPs. So those are request for support, right? So they would have an organization, an institution, submit proposals for those three topics. Very involving to start, right? And so once those are admitted, they were advised before. We're going to review them and debate which are the best proposals that we can, in the best way of the community. Does anyone have your input, and in general, literally, and how to give back to our community to fund? Um, not yet. We've done this, how many years ago?
Three years.
It was done three years.
All right.
The process I just explained, is it clear, or does anyone have any questions? So for example, I would actually like to introduce Ms. Anita. They're, they're both with the Department of Youth and Community Development. So maybe you can just share what the department is, so they can have a sense. It has to be youth, but it's basically youth and community. Anything that has to do with youth and community in New York City, they, they support.
So they, we, we find the access to programs. I was in elementary school. We also find the senior community program. In the grand, so we use fourteen to support. Four, three, four, and then there is all. So we have programs for adults. We have health care programs, programs which will save any issues that we have in terms of the health of the world. We have.
Please speak.
We have that. We have senior citizens, uh, well, and, uh, and, you know, so all this minority of people who have uh, you're keeping in bridge or learning how to write English and the anything that we say.
The whole program is there on the area.
They're all in this community area. Uh, we did. Be sure that we have. Uh, so they don't have to do it in turn. So we need to make sure that everyone at a point in time, and it's not in the long, it's sure that your population is small.
So can we just have a quick moment to switch it to turn up? Anita and David, can you probably introduce yourself? You can come up here, so they can see you all well.
My name is Anita Ansonelli. I am the Senior Director of the Neighborhood Advisory Board, Community Action Board Liaison Unit. And what that means, the Neighborhood Advisory Board, which Nina is the Chair of the Board in this area, are residents of this area that advise the Department of Youth and Community Development on what's needed. Whether it's what kind of vote and what needs to be, and David.
I think I could, the world, I mentioned that that has liaison, there's several boards, natural, or the title, the, the, the YCD. The whole area, the world that will happen, so.
The people who are in the neighborhood advise the board. And it's this call, because that's the number of the district that we're currently from down. So we give a good advice to board. David, do you mind giving her a little short? So for short, break down what the board is about? And basically, yeah, yeah. Basically, what we're doing here, this is what the board is about, is to get feedback from the community as to what are the priorities? Um, and where should money, where should the money go in our community? Okay, so we're actually going to shift into the next part of the meeting, which is where you get to share, where you get to talk. So we can actually go around and everyone can, we want to have everyone need to boost their names and, and what they think is the priority? One by one, who is that one? Okay, so um, how about we take two minutes, so both that are filling out the survey can finish it? And then we're going to have everyone to go around and to do the call, and share what you think is the number one priority, or maybe the top two priorities in this community. What, what, what needs to be, what we need to invest in, what needs to be, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's take the two minutes to finish filling out the survey. Do you now have a battery?
Are you going to stay there where you are?
Yeah, I'll stay here.
Okay.
So everyone who's online, we are just taking a few minutes to fill out the survey. Is it possible to share the link of the survey on the chat?
So um, if you just, maybe like, you're back to this wall and speak, so you can then, you'll be on camera. If you want to be on camera, I can have, if you're back against this wall here.
Okay.
And then you can, that way you can face both.
So, so they're asking this, so let's say that the petition was the need that you have to provide a statement in the community, or that we need to attend to the presentation. When it comes to public, they're, we're going to acknowledge, someone that provides to the community, no. What they want to know is, by those terms, that our people, so that's basically what. Well, we're taking the time to complete the survey. Let them get a shot of Southern Park and South for allowing you to stay. So thank you so much for allowing me to stay. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge that we have one of our board members on the, um, on Zoom, on the computer. Her name is Bette Rollimont. She's a part of the Neighborhood Advisory Board, and she's joining us virtually. Bette, if you'd like to say hello and introduce yourself, please do. Just go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, yes, of course. Good evening, everyone. Uh, yes, this is Bette Rollimont, one of the community activist member, proudly member of the, you know, the neighborhood advisory board. I'm sorry that, you know, my sound, I don't sound too good. But yes, I wanted to thank you, you know, all of you for being present there in this important, you know, event or initiative, because, you know, by having you present and, and sharing your thought and complete this survey, this is highly important for the community to get funded and satisfy some of the needs that, you know, our community have. So I really thank you from the bottom of my heart for being there. Anita, David, and my colleague Sylvia, and, uh, and, and also all the, the host, Ms. Cape, or Cape. Everyone that is involved in this, I wanted to thank you so much, and thank you for allowing me, of course, to introduce myself. If I want to say just one, one very last thing is, I want to encourage everyone on Saturday to attend the, uh, the Fair Resource. I'm going to put them on the chat, so you can continue. And you encourage others to attend. DYCD will have a table at this resource fair, so you can continue, you know, or those who may not have the opportunity to, to, to be present, so they can go at the George Washington and, and encourage others to attend, so they can continue supporting the survey. Thank you, Anita. Thanks, David, and thank all of you.
Thank you, David. So do we need like another two minutes for the survey? It's almost like we're in school, right? And just know that those that are on the Zoom, the link has been put on the chat, so feel free to fill out the survey online. So we can do one more minute, and then move on to the next page. Sound good? All right, awesome. So let's move on to the next part of the agenda. I just want to make sure that Anita and David, if you need to share anything, please just go ahead and do that. I'm just going to open up the floor and allow everyone that's here to introduce themselves and to share what they feel is a priority in this community. Like, where should money be invested? Um, Anita, can you just share where the money is coming from? Because this is federal funding. There's money coming federally, and it's being managed by the city of New York, specifically for low-income communities. So can you just give, uh, like, one minute on that?
It does come from the federal government, but it's administered by the state of New York. And what it is for, it's for anti-poverty program, which is to help people to get the effects of poverty. This program has been around for the last fifty-eight years. So it's helped a lot of people with step up to get, to get themselves out of poverty. So that's what it is. And one of the things that the law requires is are involved in the public hearing, going to observe it, to let, um, the cabinet, the development. No, that's needed in this community, in this particular community. There are forty-one different communities in the city, and you, you are one of them. So we've come to listen to you.
Awesome. Thank you, Anita. So let's get started. What you do is the honors of introducing yourself and sharing just one area that you feel we need to invest more money in, to make this community better.
My name is Dominic Robinson.
Everyone here, Dominic? No? Now, do you have a speaker?
My name is Dominic Robinson. Um, to give one, um, it's, that's not going to be way too many things that need to be done, that not being addressed, or that is addressed, but only to select two of the people. But I can, like, name, like, top, I would say, top three, um, will be job placement. For those who are out of work, who can't find jobs, you know, to find a way for, you know, to do onsite training. Instead of, because a lot of times when you try to get a job, but you gotta have certain amount of requirement, but you can't get the requirement unless you go, you know, you need to do onsite training, then they can try to go to a high-positioned job and, you know, have a good life.
Do we have programs for middle schoolers? Is that, there's some programs in the community?
If you haven't heard, the first one is more support with job placement and training for those jobs. And then the second priority.
Um, middle school programs, because there's some programs where when you go to middle school, like, say, they can get bus from middle school. Now, when it gets bus, the transportation will only bus them from eighth grade, from school to, to out. It won't bus them for after school or out. So the kids either don't get to go, because their parent can't pick them up for after school or the program, like, a digital program for middle schoolers or even high schoolers. So instead of, you know, playing at the one street, or they're not doing anything, have a program for them to actually do things. There'll be, you know, preparing up for, should be going preparation for high school, middle school, high school, college, and so on and forth. Stuff to, you know, and what it's going to be like, cleaning out all the colleges, stuff like that. Another thing is like a.
And this is the third one?
Yes, third one.
The second priority is like more programming for you, particularly in middle school. Dominic said, how is preparation, we need transportation also for after school programs, as well as just more programming in general for middle school and high school station. And the third priority.
There was, um, social, um, after, but there's a lot of time, you know, people who are disabled, out of work, or whatever the situation is, they don't really have a program to go to, or for them to get want to go to, it's too expensive. Like, have a place where, you know, they can actually go, go to art class, or even go to like a pseudo nightclub, or something like that. It's like, be able to have fun and have programs, you know, maybe to do some, um, low-income, um, like, top line bill, or something like that. Or different things like that. So it's going to be social, so that, you know, the people like me, who is very socially operated, um, maybe, you know, interact with other people socially operated, you know. Yeah, I got, I got, I'll be there, you know, maybe. Or just, or even if you are not, you know, just to get them out of house and, you know, distract other people, you know. You know, hopefully for pressure from there.
Okay, thank you, Dominic. Thank you, Dominic. So I'm just literally taking notes, so that we might begin to have this information, even though it's also being recorded. So we're going to go on to our next step. So what you think are the most pertinent needs in this community, if you can, if I want to, to me, so you guys, which you talk about?
Hi, everyone. So my name is Christopher. I'm a community manager for the overall community, my name is Antonio Santos. Uh, there are many, we live in our communities, as a helping member, and our office, we are in the tourist conversation with the agencies and union stakeholders and organizations such as this. And I'm here just to observe and, and thank for our office, we're a community member. I'm not over that, but, you know.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And so let's move on to our next step. We need to do this all and share one priority here.
My name is Shimon. Oh, that. Well, by which they're in, they're coming, they're, they're in, that activity, y'all have more activities for them to come in, to keep them coming. Because stuff that's going on now, maybe, maybe bring the team, and it's not catching, I have to keep them. And for parents that, that have kids that are only sixteen or twenty-four, you know, like our age, like, you know, we don't have what it means. Because I think people who are twenty-four, old, this age, if we not that age, we're not able to do. There's some kids that, that don't have a lot to do. Or don't know how to read, or don't know how to write, can't get help with the furniture, this way, these facilities we have, but of course, they don't, they don't deserve it. For, again, for, it's also learning to be, and follow, you know, that, you know, that's true. So that's what it is. You need community development, you need to go up in age twenty-four, every time you're older than. Do you have a training program, like, right now, for, for, for jobs? For jobs? Yeah. But they are helping students. For that.
Yeah, no, and thank you for bringing that up. Um, we, we will follow up, because there are some that need to money, so we'll share that one, we'll share that everyone. And this is really important, because, that's why these surveys are important, because we need to let the city know that there needs to be more funding for this. Right? To train people for jobs and also job placement. I was about to say something, I'm not a Romulan, but I'm just going to say it. You know, there are, for example, some agencies that are focused to connect people with jobs, and they don't do a great job at, you know? So that's something that needs to be improved, but the city needs to know, or the state needs to know, that there needs to be more funding in that, and it also needs to be supervised a little bit more, so they can make sure that they're acting well.
Or people that come out and talk about, they're going to help you with the work, what they're starting in your city.
Sharon?
That's the wrong.
Sharon. All right, thank you, Sharon. Our next caller.
I think it's the same one. Um, they have to, like, if they're, so I think more activity, maybe, then more, uh, more things you can do. Instead of, if nothing's running around a project, it's no more of, you know, we're not going to go.
Right, that was bad, not in terms of parks, because it pretty much did construction on almost every park in the area. Especially the ones that are close to, begging you, that they're all under construction, I know there's some.
It's sort of way too, it's a ton of the tooling that, um, it was a lot of structures to develop. Been a lot of them off during its, sort of way, it's been, some of them, it's better like a super, not that having to go back there, playing with that park in the fall. So that would be the first stop, and we'll be starting to get more money in the park. And by the time next year, hopefully, knowing about it, um, that, but it would have been too bad.
Thank you.
So I need rats.
So rodents?
Yeah.
Rodents in your home?
Yeah, exactly.
I already just saw what I talked about.
Give one more, you might get in the house before you die. That's why I'm like, oh, this meeting, I have, yeah, it's, it's, oh, rats. A rat, it's a city.
Is this, is that on the survey? I don't know this one.
No, it's not.
Is there anything related to that?
No.
So we'll, we'll have to put that on others? Okay, I'll put it in the, I'll have to put that on others. And maybe, all right, that's, this is a whole other thing, but, um, I think maybe we want to see, please advocate for it, even better rat poisoning, because maybe it would be used, not effective.
Can we understand they want to knock stuff off? Maybe we want to knock stuff off, but it's, uh, it's my, I, uh, you need a job.
I know.
So imagine if you could feel the, you know, or if you're doing their homework after school, why do these babies have to be subject to rights, they're rats? So now that affects you, it is.
Same.
We try, we do it clean, but they need something, and they, it's not, there's nothing to say to do about that.
Thank you. So you just have something? Please, our next step.
My name is, so I was doing, like, not three, two, three, like, eleven, and five, you know? And even if, like, actual new programs or anything like that, still when they come home, they be bored. Even the programs over there, they still need more activities happening, for some reason, business. The habit of the program may not, they didn't, you know? It's just more, more, who are in, more, you know? There's a fair amount of work from, from now, ten apples, they need to spend more. There is no babysitter, or, 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 maybe, only parents, they, but there's no, um, somebody that worked in, and no, people that are, it's, uh, I mean. I didn't have, you didn't have that as well, I didn't. Right, this, more, people think, I'm very down with that. He did it, he died about. They are, they got a program, but then I like to. I remember wrong, I'm thirty-two years old. My grandparents, they come home, they're late, late. So we have to think, I was, I was rather moving your country, we walk home, but I was, I was, I want to work with, with the, and to clean that apple. So then we want to support my, and there's, it's, you know, we still need more stuff, and I should be looking at these people. Even if they're wrong, they're not, well, the after school start, they know that's the truth. Once they out of there and go home, and the children don't have nothing to come to, and have, they don't have something to do.